Meeting will come to order. This evening, we are here in regards to public input for our 2020-21 budget, school budget. This afternoon, we had a work session discussing with Finance Director Ms. Forsman and Dr. Gordon, some of their plans. And now, we would like to hear from the public if we have speakers who would like to speak on the upcoming school budget. Speakers who would like to speak on the upcoming budget? Hearing no one, I'll close that meeting. And now, we will open our public meeting. Call to order, and I'll ask Dr. Buck to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Buck. And before we begin this evening, I want to take just a special moment. Just recently, many of you might know, we lost a person who had been a board member here on the school board in Suffolk for 25 years. Ms. Lorraine Brinkley Skeeter passed. And Lorraine had been an instrumental educator and leader in our community for many years. And at this time, in remembrance and honor of Ms. Lorraine Skeeter, who served the Cypress Borough for 25 years, let's all have a moment of silence. And now, we need Mr. Waller, a certification of the closed meeting.
A resolution of certification of the closed meeting of December 12, 2019 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
We need a second. I'll second it.
Board members, please hold.
Next, we have the approval of our agenda this evening. This is an action item.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Board members, please hold.
Next, public speakers on agenda topics. Are there anyone who would like to speak on any topic on the agenda? If there are none, we move to reports by the superintendent. Dr. Gordon?
Thank you, Chairman Byram. Ladies and gentlemen, we are so excited today that we have some excellent singers in the house under the leadership of Mr. Chris Sadler. While all of our great musicians from Northern Shores Elementary School, please come to the front for some holiday music.
As part of the Good News Report, I'm usually introducing to share with our audience some of the great things that happen in our schools each and every day, and some of the excitement and awards that our students and staff win. In front of you, the Northern Shores Dolphins Against Bullying. It's what that orange ribbon is, and they wanted to make sure that you had one of them. They're called dabbers, Dolphins against, or just dabs, maybe. So, right now, the students are coming in, and they're under the direction of Christopher Sadler.
Winter is my favorite season. There are some who don't agree. When it snows, that's when I'm happy. It's as simple as candy. And the cold and the snow is where I want to be, so let their feet go out. You can keep all the heat and give me frosty air. Oh, you won't see me cough. Take a cue from the polar bears who know how to have fun. Because it's winter, it's winter again. Penguins have the right idea. Racing the Antarctic ice. Summer is mine, but not forever. Winter can be very nice. And the cold and the snow is where I want to be, so let their feet go out. You can keep all the heat and give me frosty air. Oh, you won't see me cough. Take a cue from the polar bears who know how to have fun. Because it's winter, it's winter again. It's winter, it's winter, it's winter, it's winter again.
Will you be here this December? When I am family. Will you bring us silver menhus? Home in a broken home? If you're not here this December, we hope that you will be. We will be there beside you wherever you may go. Will you be here for the sunrise? Sharing the day as it starts? Every moment we have with you stays right here in our hearts. If you're not here this December, we hope that you will be. We will be there beside you wherever you may go. We will be there beside you wherever you may go.
Thank you guys very much. I think that song is particularly appropriate for Northern Shores, which is probably one of our highest military connected families. And that's probably why they like that song so much. So, thank you all. Our next Good News Report is focusing on how Suffolk Public Schools recently earned a state award for its efforts to end childhood hunger. In November, Suffolk Public Schools was one of 15 school divisions across the state to receive the Dorothy S. McCullough School Nutrition Award, which was presented by the organization No Kid Hungry Virginia. Across America, one in seven kids face hunger. And I've got to scroll better, sorry. So, No Kid Hungry Virginia partners with schools and districts to connect eligible kids to federal nutrition programs, because schools play a critical role in providing children with the nutrition they need to fuel their bodies, so that we can fill their brains. This award celebrates Virginia school divisions that have gone above and beyond by operating all available federal child nutrition programs, and also achieving exceptional participation in the school breakfast program. So, I'd now like to call up Lawrence Whiting, our Director of Food and Nutrition Programs, to share some more specifics about what Suffolk Public Schools has been doing, and maybe some plans for the future to feed our kids' bodies, so their minds will be ready to learn.
Good evening, Chairman Bynum, Vice Chair Buck, board members, Dr. Gordon, SPS, family and friends. Suffolk Public Schools is one of 15 school divisions across the state that received the Dorothy S. McCullough School Nutrition Award by the No Kid Hungry Organization. The Dorothy S. McCullough School Nutrition Award celebrates Virginia school divisions that have gone above and beyond by operating all federal child nutrition programs and achieving exceptional participation in the school breakfast program. Originally launched in 2017, the award was named in honor of the former First Lady of Virginia, Dorothy S. McCullough, in recognition of her efforts to end childhood hunger in the Commonwealth. To qualify for the award, school divisions must meet at least 70% of their students who qualify for free and reduced meals, eat a school lunch, and are also eating school breakfast. After-school meals are also part of the program, and they have to be served as part of the CACFP program, which is the At-Risk After-School Child and Adult Care Food Program. Summer meals are sponsored also either through the Summer Meals, Summer Food Service Program, the Seamless Summer Program, or the National School Lunch Program. Most of the accomplishments of this award are due to hard work of the Food Service and Nutritional Services staff. The CACFP program was added to serve dinner meals to our students at Brookview T. Washington Elementary. In the next year, we will add another schools that qualify for this program. Much of the success for the increase in students eating resulted from the Breakfast in the Classroom program. Breakfast in the Classroom allows students to receive their breakfast and consume the meal in their classroom. This gives the breakfast a more family-style environment and removes the stigma that may be attached. It also allows the teachers to take care of administrative tasks, for example, taking attendance and collecting homework while the students are eating. Currently, we have 11 schools on the Breakfast in the Classroom program. One of the goals of this School and Nutritional Services Department is to get all of the schools in the district on the Breakfast in the Classroom program. We also have added better quality food to the menu, and will be working toward a student-centered quality menu of nutritious breakfast and lunch. Research shows that students who are not hungry do better in school, academically, and behavior. All of this would not be possible without the outstanding managers and cafeteria workers. We also need to give equal credit to the school administrators, teachers, teacher assistants, and custodians. Their assistance has been invaluable to the Suffolk Public Schools achieving this award. This is truly a team award, and with the help of all of these people and others, we are feeding students. Thank you.
And a special thank you to all the staff that was involved. I know it took a lot of people to make that award possible. Principals, cafeteria workers, those janitors, teachers.
Absolutely. Like I said, that's a big program, and it's a big undertaking, but it's made a difference in how many students eat breakfast. And I don't have the staff's write this minute, but it's been a big, big difference.
Wonderful. Thank you. That good?
Our final Good News Report will introduce you to recent graduates of our Leadership Academy for potential principals. So, if Pamela Connor, the Director of Elementary Leadership, could come forward, so we can learn more about it.
Good evening. I want to ask Dr. Lee to join me as well. Madam Chair Bynum, Madam Vice Chair Brooks Buck, Superintendent Gordon, School Board Members, Attorney Waller, this is great news tonight. We're here to recognize 14 of our employees that were actually a part of our 2019 Leadership Academy for Potential Principal cohort. And these individuals, who are employed by Suffolk Public Schools, are part of a group that is a pool of applicants, it's a pool of candidates that were actually completing the principal program. These are preparing these 14 individuals to become school principals in our K-12 buildings. Since it started in 1997, 190 of our school leaders have successfully completed the Leadership Academy. The applicants were screened back in December and January. They actually participated in a written prompt. They went through an interview process, and then they were selected. 18 of the 50 applicants were selected for this program, and 14 have successfully completed it tonight and are being recognized. A part of this cohort, a part of the program requirements, they've been working very diligently for the last 12 months. They've participated in leadership seminars. They've shadowed principals in elementary, middle, and high schools. They've participated in classroom walkthroughs. They participated, they have attended school board meetings and city council meetings. They've attended professional conferences, seminars, and they have each successfully completed a leadership project that they actually presented to the group last week. So, a lot of work has been put in over the last 12 months for these individuals to successfully complete this. At this time, I'm going to ask them to stand up and join us up here. And Dr. Gordon, if you will come down and help us. Dr. Lee is actually going to acknowledge this group. Throughout the last 12 months, our presenters, we've had presenters to come in and talk with our groups at our monthly meetings. Dr. Whitney, Attorney Waller, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Rice, Dr. Brown, Mrs. Forsman, Mrs. Whitely, Mrs. Bradshaw, Beverly Young, Mr. Napier, Mr. Morris, Ms. Dr. Lee, Dr. Van Hosen, Catherine Pishon, and Lori Mooney have actually presented leadership topics to these individuals. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lee, and Dr. Gordon will come up. If you all would stand up here, and we will approve it then with their successful completion.
Good evening. These future principals have worked really, really hard, and I was just really amazed at the projects that they undertook, and a lot of them will actually benefit Suffolk Public Schools, and I believe we will be implementing some of those programs really soon. So, I will call the candidates and let you know what their project was. First, we have Ms. Kara Burr, and her project was the Kennel Closet. Next, we have Mr. Robert Castine, and his project was the Virginia Licensure Renewal Project. Next, we had Ms. Shonda Duran, and her project was the In-School Suspension Manual. Next, we had Christopher Gilgrin, and the project was Special Ed Resources Revamped. Next, we have Maria Lawson-Davenport, and her project was Leaders, Education, Achieving, and Designing Success. Next, Ms. Caitlin Lightner-Black, her project was Supporting All Teachers Instructionally and Socially in the Year. Next, we have Yvette Pierce, and her project was the Focus Center, Finding Ways to Overcome Challenges by Utilizing Strengths. Next, we have Mr. Andre Riddick, whose project was Virtual Job Shadow Career Exploration. Next, Ms. Latricia Rouse, and her project was also the In-School Suspension Project. Next, we had Ms. Tanya Spruill, her project was the Turlington Woods Transition Plan. Next was Ms. Shalise Taylor, and her project was Teaching and Learning Framework and Administrative Support Procedures. Next, we had Mr. Dennis Tyssinger, whose project was Positive Behavioral Supports and Interventions for the Transportation Department. Next was Ms. Courtney Vanderlinden, and her project was also the Focus Center, Finding Ways to Overcome Challenges by Utilizing Strengths. And last, but not least, was Ms. Melissa Zawadny, and her project was also Positive Behavioral Supports and Interventions for the Transportation Department. Congratulations, and this is our LAP cohort for 2019.
It's been an exciting 12 months, and as you can see, they work very hard. And a lot of these projects have actually been implemented in our school division throughout their tenure. So, at this time, I'll ask them if they would like to go back to their seats, and I'm going to turn this over to Courtney Vanderlinden, who has been a part of the cohort this year.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Byram, Dr. Gordon, and School Board Members. My name is Courtney Vanderlinden, and I have the distinct privilege of representing the 2019 Leadership Academy for Potential Principals, or the LAP cohort tonight. In January, the LAP cohort members began a journey to further develop themselves as educational leaders. We were each afforded the opportunity to learn from and collaborate with leaders of all types from across the division. In addition to this collaboration, each member was able to gain practical leadership experience with the support of administrators across the division. The cohort met monthly and discussed the implications of instructional leadership, school climate and culture, human resources, organizational management, communication, and community relations, professionalism, and much more. During our tenure as LAP cohort members, we were each empowered to complete a culminating project, which we presented last month. Projects cover topics such as human resources, technological support, special education, restorative justice, equity, and transportation. Each project was a culminating representation of the experiences we gained from being LAP cohort members. And before you stand, or previously stood, 14 individuals who began an unforgettable journey together and stand proudly as Suffolk Public Schools' latest graduating LAP cohort class. I proudly speak for all of us when I say that we are grateful to each individual who helped us to continue to grow as educational leaders over the last year. The educational experiences, insights, connections, and relationships we built have been integral pieces for our development into the educational leaders we are today. To Ms. Connor, Dr. Lee, Dr. Burr, guest speakers, our countless mentors, we wish to say a final thank you to all of you for taking the time to invest in us and our leadership development. We cannot say enough how much we appreciate the investment you made in us, and as a token of gratitude, our cohort members will present each of you with a thank you letter to show our gratitude to our program's guest speakers. And again, thank you all for everything.
This is 14 of our individuals, and they are passing out their thank you letters right now to the individuals who actually spent their time with us. They would come to our meetings. We met monthly at Kings Fork Middle School. Attorney Waller was one of them as well. You know, when you grow your own, we really prosper from this. Four of our original cohorts have actually been promoted throughout this tenure, so that's exciting to see in 2019. So, we congratulate them, and thank you for the opportunity to share these wonderful folks with you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, and to all of our graduates, you now have some high expectations, where we expect you all to get jobs. But most importantly, we expect you all to be able to be our future of leaders in the school division. And I'm so thankful when I see the list of guest speakers that we had, but more importantly, the projects and the culminating activities that you all did were created to benefit our students and our school division. And to us, that's what it's really all about. Strong principal talent management that we're seeing, the development of our leaders, and the role models you all serve for both our faculty and staff is so important. So, we want to thank you for all of your great and your hard work, and we know that the future is bright with leaders like you in Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you again.
And on behalf of the board, I look forward to seeing many of you in our schools in a leadership position in the future. I know you're on the right path, and you've had some good guidance, and you're going to get there. Thank you very much for all you've done.
And...
Next, we have calendar of special events?
Correct. But before we get to that, Ms. Byram, I do want to take the time to also recognize a new leader that we have here in Suffolk Public Schools, and that is our new Community Engagement Officer, Ms. Anthonet Ward. And Ms. Ward will come to the front. She still here? Ms. Ward has a Bachelor of Science from Virginia Commonwealth University in Mass Communication. She also has a Master of Arts, a major in Strategic Communication from American University, coming to us in the Public Relations Department for GEICO Insurance. Ms. Ward is a Kings Fork High School graduate, also a leader and a board of directors for the Alumni Association, and she has come in with some great ideas to help our community engagement activities move forward. So, Ms. Ward, welcome back to Suffolk Public Schools, and this time, we'll turn it over to you if you have a couple of words to say, or recognize any family members that may be in attendance.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you, Dr. Gordon. Of course, first, I just want to say that I'm so grateful, and I'm so humble for the opportunity. Thank you all on the board, thank you all on the administrative office. I just can't wait to get started, to hit the ground running. I do have my family here tonight. I have my dad there in the back, Fernando. I have my brother, who's also a Kings Fork High School graduate. He's now over at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. And I have my sister, who's currently a Kings Fork High School student as a sophomore. So, they are here to support me, to support us, to see and take Suffolk Public Schools to brand-new heights. So, thank you all.
That is outstanding, as we look for Ms. Ward to officially join us on January 6 of 2020. For our calendar of special events, I know that many of our staff members and our students are looking forward to next Friday, as that is the last day before winter break, but we are expecting 100% attendance that day. So, please make sure that you are there to close it out on a high note as we prepare for 2020. School does reopen officially on January 6, 2020. Also, for some of our folks and our support staff that have done a tremendous job of making sure that they keep our schools clean and prepared each and every day, Custodial Workers Appreciation Day will be that Wednesday, January 8th. So everyone in attendance and everyone listening at home, please make sure that you mark that down on your calendar. Wednesday, January 8th is Custodial Workers Appreciation Day. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday will be Monday, January 20th and schools will be closed on that day. The last aspect of the report from the superintendent deal with a new program initiative that we are starting here in Suffolk Public Schools. We'd like to take this time to introduce to our school community SPS Connect and we have a short video that will go into some additional details about that. Mr. Littlefield on the team?
Whenever I take a project home and I try to do it on my computer, most of the time it glitches and I'm not able to complete the project.
No, I have a tablet that I'm only able to do certain things on. On a tablet, you get the keyboard up in front of what you're doing and you have to keep scrolling, but on a Chromebook, you get to see the full thing and type with your hands down instead of in your web.
I would have to ask a teacher during resource, could I take time to work on assignment and go to my teacher's classroom? It becomes rushed and not fully developed.
Welcome to SPS Connect. What we feel is the missing piece to closing the achievement gap for our students in Suffolk Public Schools. For the first time in Suffolk Public Schools' history, our secondary students are going to be able to take their Chromebooks home. We're talking about anytime, anywhere learning, where our kids will have collaboration, increased communication, and the opportunity to really work well with their fellow students in the classroom. SPS Connect is also going to help us to eliminate the digital divide. What I mean is the opportunity for students to be able to use technology, regardless of they are in school, at home, in a coffee shop, anywhere. We want to make sure that our kids have that same opportunity regardless of where they are.
I think it would mean an opportunity for our students to take their learning to the next level because kids will come to class with a lot more knowledge-based resources. I think kids will be more prepared to collaborate and participate in discussion.
I feel like it would give me higher quality work because you can relax knowing that you have time to do it at home.
For me personally, having a device that I can use at any time would mean that I can do my schoolwork on time, my grades can go up, and my teachers can expect a lot more from me.
I think that if we take a Chromebook home, we would be able to ask questions outside of school. So if we're doing homework and we don't know how to do a math problem, we can talk to a math teacher and ask him for help.
When we have Chromebooks available to us in the music classroom, we use them often for practice tracks. Having an independent time to be able to rehearse gives students a chance to hone in on what they need in particular and that individual learning is critical to the performance experience.
Having the additional apps and the additional things that the Chromebook can hook up to, it benefits our students because it's preparing them for a future career in robotics or in computer science.
A program that would be interesting to explore is something like Inventor or CAD, which is a three software that you can model. Being able to use that program at home would definitely kickstart my interest and just kind of allow me to explore everything I want to do.
Having students the opportunity to explore those things outside of school would bring benefit to enhancing learning in the classroom.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Littlefield. As you can see here, we want to make sure that as we transition to this new aspect of our one-to-one initiative, we have some strong responsibility that we're asking of our students. And now you have complete ownership of your devices, which means treat it as it's one of the best things that you can have. And we still will have our acceptable use policy in place. We want to make sure that we're putting the responsibility back on the kids and as you heard us talk about in the video of eliminating the digital divide, we are working with some of our Suffolk Public Schools' business partners to be able to provide hotspots to those students who may not have internet access at home. And the plan will be to also have that available for checkout through our media centers also beginning February 1st. Now, I want to make sure that everyone pays attention to this image that we have up here right beside the podium. These are seven textbooks that throughout the school year that our students at the secondary level have been asked to carry around in their book bags, at home. That's a back problem waiting to happen right there. We wanted to make sure as we continue to work with our open educational resources that we're actually going to upload our textbooks onto our Chromebooks to give our kids that access, which means that even if you do not have internet access, it will be uploaded onto your hard drive so you can still can access your learning materials with or without the internet. And I thank you to Ms. Sheri Henshaw-Wood for putting together this video. Thank you to Dr. Lee for carrying these heavy books. Thank you to Mr. Littlefield for helping us to put this video together and really taking the lead for our concepts. We really honestly feel that this is going to be the missing link to allow our students to really have anytime, anywhere learning and a full-fledged one-to-one model. Now, for our elementary school students, Phase Two will be our fifth graders in the fall. In September, we're also going to allow our fifth grade students to be able to take their Chromebooks home. So we're hoping that our secondary students can model the proper way to use them for research, instruction, and collaboration for the rest of the second semester. Thank you to you all for your help.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. And next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda, this is an action item. Madam Chair, before the motion is made, I believe Dr. Gordon has a recommendation on an item that's contained on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Waller. I am asking for Item 15 on Teacher Bus Pay to be removed from the consent, 14, I'm sorry, to be removed from the consent agenda.
Item 14.
The motion had to do with deleting Item 14 from the consent agenda and with that deletion, I move for approval.
I second the motion.
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Under unfinished business, first item up is committee membership. I believe last meeting, we discussed this in very much detail, committee membership. It was a big discussion and I first want to thank, before we get into any more discussion, I would like to thank Dr. Latoya Harrison and her staff and those that helped with the report that we required. It took a lot of hours and energy to research where these people on these committees actually live, the boroughs that they are located in, and so forth. And I want to thank Dr. Harrison for her work on that. I know it took a great deal of time and energy and members on staff I know helped with that. Thank you very much for that. And committee membership, is there anything anyone would like to say as we begin?
Madam Chair, I would like to just suggest that since our concerns, the concerns voiced about committee membership involved adding people to the numbers and we did indeed add something to the form of policies to restrict the numbers of persons on the membership. So what I'd like to do is move that we amend or change that particular line in the policies that suggest that we're limited to 20 people. If we do so, that would allow us not to have enormous numbers, but to add the numbers that we have to the group. From the information you sent us, we have no more than two people to add to either one of the committees. And the only committee that I understand from our policy discussion that was restricted by law was the Health Committee, the SHAB Committee, and we didn't have a problem with that because that was restricted to 20. So if we simply delete the restriction that we have for 20, we can then as board add the members that we were to add.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Board members, please vote. I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. I'm not in favor of increasing the number. I think that's not a solution to a problem, but it's a prelude to another problem because then you have, when committees become too large, it make it extremely difficult to do work. That's why at the last meeting, before we approved names, I recommended more than once for us not to approve anything until it came back from staff what we were up against. We moved too fast and changing the wording now is nothing, is not going to fix it. I think we just need to go according to what our policy is, what our policy states, and move forward with the new policy that was adopted at our last meeting, not put a Band-Aid on a wound.
Any other discussion?
We stand, can you hear me?
So we stand that we have committees that's already to capacity now. So in order for us to add someone, which all board members are supposed to add a person, we will have to take someone off the committee. Is that what I'm hearing?
If we limit it to 20, are you talking? If we limit it to 20, we'd have to take people off who are already working on the committees. Since most of us have people from our boroughs because the idea is we understood it was for equity so that every borough would be represented. When we got the information, we found that on many of the committees, the bulk of our boroughs are already represented. I would get to add one person to two committees. I think there's one that Mrs. Byram has someone to add to. I think there might be two for Holy Neck and maybe two for Chuckettuck on different committees. So we're not talking about a large number. If we change the number, people are going to have to delete people from the committees. And so my idea was to avoid, at this point in the middle of the school year, taking people who've already been working off committees since we don't have that many to add anyway.
Any other discussion? Ms. Dorit?
Well, I noticed that we got, we received a late update to the committee members and there were a bunch crossed off on that update for 1212. So I'm not even sure right now what list I'm looking at is the, who really is on the committees because that 1212, the last one posted, it's got a lot of strike-throughs on it. So I feel again, we should have an updated list that is clear and clean so we can really see how many is on each committee. And I mean, I don't know, the list is, there's a lot marked through, correct? So I don't know if that changes what Dr. Brooks Buck put out in terms of two here and two there because there's a lot of strike-throughs on that 1212 submission.
So we wanted to provide you a comparison so that you could see potential recommendations from staff if members had to be removed based on lack of attendance, lack of communication, et cetera. Information that I received from Mr. Waller, I'll use that as an example. Our Gifted Education Advisory Committee had 37 people on the committee, but it was actually listed in a policy that was not supposed to have any more than 20. As we continue to go down the list, Parent Advisory Council, which is the same as the Title I Advisory Committee, 26 members listed that it was not supposed to have any more than 20. So as we continue to go down each committee and Mr. Waller did an excellent job of double-checking our policy and the regulations of the committee, we wanted to provide the board with an option of seeing, due to a lack of communication or a lack of attendance from individuals, if we had to remove people from a committee, these would be some of the ones who haven't participated anyway. And to give the option to the board, if they did want to add additional members based on having a representative from their borough, this is going to be a suggestion from us of some people that you could potentially target.
To remove them?
To remove.
To remove because they have the talent.
Correct.
But we want to make sure, you know, that no one who has been participating.
Correct.
Right, is my concern. If you've been participating, we do not want those people removed from a committee. I would not agree with that.
Correct.
Madam Chair, let's stay true to the policy that we passed last week. The policy that we passed at our last, at our last meeting, it stated that each board member would be allowed to appoint their representatives, not that we would be inherited members based off of a list. So when, if my memory serves me correctly, the board member appoints his or her representative and then the committee is filled by letters of interest later on. Here, we have approved something that didn't follow our policy that we approved prior to approving the list of names. So my recommendation is for us to be a good example to our staff and those who look to us to do the right thing would be to follow the policy that we have put in place. And if that means some people will have to be removed from the committees, it is what it is. We passed the policy knowing the risk. We approved names knowing the risk. Now to come back at a later time to change, to put a Band-Aid on something, that's not fixing it. The policy that we approved at the last meeting is a good policy. We just have to do our due diligence to follow what we put in writing, just as we would expect any of our staff to do. To follow our policy, we must follow our policy as well.
Dr. Buck?
Because it is our policy and the addition of the limit to 20 we just created. That wasn't a policy that was in place for any amount of time. We just created that. We just discussed it actually in our meeting in October in our policy subcommittee meeting. And then we didn't get to vote on it in October because we passed up something. But at any rate, I think at this point in December, we're talking about January. So if we started all the committees all over again for January and then we have expectations in those same policies for when reports are due to the board all during the year, it would be impossible for us at this point in time to do that, to start the process now and continue with it. We also discussed in the last meeting and the board concurred with it, the majority did, that we could somehow fix that after we went through what we went through in the last meeting. And what we decided to do as a board was to look at how many people were from the boroughs already and then amend them accordingly. That's what we decided to do in the last meeting. We voted to do that as well. So I'm just of the opinion that at this point in the school year, that if we want to have this practice in place, then we need to have our guidelines in place before the next school year starts. So if we want to do that for 2020, that's something we could do. 2021, I'm sorry, that's something that we could do for school year 2021, but in the middle of the year to try to start a committee, just to restart a committee that already exists rather than just amending the committee by adding the people who are missing if you already have a representative, if we're talking about equity. Now, if we're talking about something else, that's something else. But if we were talking about equity and we already have people on a committee, it doesn't make sense to take them off and then go back and... make sense to take them off and then go back and get someone to put them on the committee. Now if we're not talking about equity, but some other measure, then I suppose that would make sense. But it was introduced under the banner of, we just wanted everybody to be distributed fairly. And that's why I made the recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Just to make sure that the board is aware, because I know that we've been talking about this for some, for some months now. As a refresher, the school board will appoint citizens to serve on the citizen advisory committees. The school board will issue a public announcement and will determine the process for receiving applications and/or letters of interest, like Mr. Riddick said, from citizens to serve on the citizen advisory committees. In selecting citizens to serve on the citizen advisory committees, the school board shall take into consideration, but not limited to, the following: equitable distribution of citizen advisory committee members during the seven voting boroughs of the city, similar to what Dr. Brooks-Buck just said; expressed interest of the citizen to serve on the citizen advisory committee; the need for diversity; the needs of the school board; and other good and just reason for appointment. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that, as you are continuing to deliberate.
May I ask a question? If we start from that point, then we have to first advertise these openings for a period of time. So we're not even talking about being able to get started in January, we're probably talking more like trying to get started in February.
I think that you all have some flexibility there, and what can be considered to be an advertisement. And to be honest, this discussion that we've had in the last school board meetings can also serve as the advertisement. I honestly believe that the key is going to be the interest from any citizens that we have that want to participate on any of, on any of the committees.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Dorie?
No.
Oh, you?
Madam Chair, my recommendation to solve this situation is, we take the names that we have, and the committee members we have thus far, and form them as a interim committee into the beginning of the next school year, where we follow the policy that we passed at our last school board meeting. But the names that are suggested currently will serve as interim committees, meaning come next year, we will go through our actual process. We're not going to ra, my recommendation is that we don't raise the cap, but we just make these persons interim people now, so they can finish the great work that they have started. But come next school year, we follow the policy that we had implemented at the last school board meeting.
I just wanted a point of clarification. I know on the Special Advisory Committee, anybody that's consultant is a non-voting member of the committee. If individuals are listed as consultant and they live in my borough, does that count as my person on the committee?
I will defer to Mr. Waller if I am incorrect in what I'm about to say. But what I believe is that if you are a consultant and a non-voting member, that does not count as your representative for your committee. Any disagreement with that, Mr. Waller?
No, because as your member of the committee, quite naturally, you would want your member to have a voting right. So the, the one that's on the committee as a consultant that does not have a voting right is not your representative on that committee.
That does change some things then, because I think they were counting consultants as being borough representatives, and I don't know that that's accurate.
We wanted to list everyone that was actually on the committee, just to give you all a full idea. The request from the board last month was for anyone that was participating in the committees to note their borough representation. This is why you also see several members that say does not live in Suffolk. So we want to provide the board with all the information for everyone that was actually at the committee meetings.
Dr. Buck?
When it comes to a committee like, like CTE, for example, we have businesses that we've partnered with. I would see it or have difficulty with dropping those persons and saying, we don't need them. Our program has worked really well, the way it has been, with those persons. New things are wonderful when they work. When they don't work, or when they ruin or damage our reputation, they cause other kinds of problems. That's just my opinion, and of course, everyone has a right to have one. And I'm done with the conversation. I, I brought up this so that we had some avenue for resolving an issue that we had. I don't have enough people who demonstrated an interest to stack all of the committees right away, especially if I delete other people who are already working. That's a problem. And it's the middle of the school year. And I believe when I made the motion, I talked about the fact that we would do whatever we needed to do for the twenty-twenty-one school year. That was a part of it. All the committees are a year. They start fresh. If we start fresh at the beginning of the year, we won't have an issue. But starting now, trying to start fresh, is going to be a problem. And it's going to be a problem trying to get people to serve.
Madam Chair.
That's a matter of thing.
Yes, that's right.
Madam Chair, we didn't do this right. We dropped the ball. As a board, we dropped the ball. We have to make it a habit of following what's in writing that we say we're going to do. If we say we're going to advertise and to the general public, and it's not coming back at the tail end and try to do cleanup. It, it, it's not passing policy on top of policy. And I certain don't want to leave a bare aura in any one of our volunteers' mouth. That's why when you develop committees, you have to give it some deep thought as into what you want it to do. For an example, the CTE committee, that's one committee who should have more than twenty people, because you want to grow. However, but each committee, you have to develop it, the purpose of it, the mission, the mission objectives, how many members you're going to have, and you have to put it in writing, and you use what's in writing to hold people accountable. So I don't know if I could ask another board member to withdraw the motion, or, I mean, there's already been motion in second. But I do want to reiterate another alternative we have to act on tonight. If we, if the motion that is already on the floor is withdrawn, and another motion is made to take those names, the, on the persons who are currently serving in these committees, and make these persons as interim committee members for the conclusion of our 2019-2020 school year, and then concluding that school year, we began the process as our policy dictates, we didn't kick anyone off, we didn't put a negative taste in anyone's mouth. But if the motion remains that we add seats, I have a quarrel with that. Just because I have people serving on committees that has come from the Suffolk Borough, according to our policy, you still violated it, because the board member appoints, not inherits. One person, and currently on any of these committees, I haven't appointed none from the Suffolk Borough. So that's a violation and infringing on my right that was given to me at the last meeting that we voted for. So my recommendation would be again, is to remove the motion that's on the floor, accept the names that has been submitted as interim committee members to serve for the rest of the 2019-2020 school year, but beginning 2020-2021 school year, we fully follow the policy to the letter of the policy that we have pertaining to citizen advisory committees. That's my recommendation.
Any other? There's a motion on the floor in a second.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarity, we have a motion on the floor in a second. The only way that we would be able, as Mr. Riddick explained, to potentially follow his recommendation or to vote. If we were going to follow Mr. Riddick's recommendation, then Dr. Brooks-Buck would have to withdraw her motion. But for, point of clarity for myself, it almost sounds very similar where you all were saying the same thing.
Yes.
Of keeping, okay, okay. So Dr. Brooks-Buck, you want to clarify your, your motion again?
Let me clarify my motion. What I said was...
If we're talking about still appointing our members, I'm not sure you're saying not appoint any of your members. Not appoint anybody, just leave the committee, since we voted on them last week. Is that what you were saying?
What I'm saying is to not increase the numbers of the cap. Those persons who are currently serving on the committees, you leave that the same for the rest of this school year only. And you will follow the policy beginning of 2020-2021 school year. That way you don't lose anyone, but the caps still remain, and, and you just go from there.
And my motion was to extend the cap to include whoever is missing from the committees, to give you the right to put people on the committees. So let's say if there are thirty-seven people on the, on one of the committees, if there was one person who has not, if you, for instance, Mr. Riddick, had not had a chance to appoint somebody on that committee, or didn't have someone representing your borough, that would mean it would be extended so that you could put a person on the committee to represent your borough, because your borough was missing from that committee. That was what I was attempting to do. And all the committees, as I understand them, are for one year. They're not past that. So when I said for twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, it would be that we would begin with the twenty, just because of where we are in the school year. It just doesn't seem to make sense. That would still allow you to add whomever you wanted. I don't want to withdraw my motion. I think we need to vote. If we don't want to do it, that's fine, we can end the discussion and do whatever we have to do.
Ms. May, I believe you.
I just need some clarification.
You're on. Yeah, she's good.
Okay. I just want to be clear on this. Is this just for this school year?
Yes.
And we are going to follow what we voted to do for the twenty-twenty-one school year, as Mr. Riddick has suggested?
Yes, ma'am.
If, Madam Chair, if I, if I could...
It just seems like we're going around the world.
I think I can, I think I can bring some clarity to this. I believe that from the motion I heard coming from Vice Chair Buck, she's actually asked that the cap be lifted, which would involve changing the policy as it currently stands. What I hear Mr. Riddick saying is to waive the policy for this current school year only. And then at the beginning of the next school year, you rely on your policy again. So one motion involves lifting the cap, which basically involves modifying or revising your policy. The other suggestion is waiving the cap only for this school year. And then the next school year, you relying on what's in your policy. So I think that's the difference in terms of what is being recommended, as I hear it.
The concern was that we allow those persons who are currently serving to serve, and even if it exceeded the cap, we've already started the school year, we're well into it, and these committees need to function. So the concern here is to allow these folks to serve. And then next school year, we could go back and follow what we need to do.
I think what, what...
So what I heard you describing is waiving it for this year?
Well...
And that, that would be what Mr. Riddick is referring to, to waive it for this year? That's not the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to change the policy.
I can modify the motion to waive it. Please, and we don't have to find anybody?
Okay.
Would that be? Okay. I move that we waive the policy for this year.
Point of order, Spencer.
Okay.
You have to withdraw.
I did. I said I would modify my motion or withdraw the motion.
Yeah, withdraw.
I withdraw the motion.
And I will withdraw my second.
And I move that we waive the policy for this year, and begin the new policy next school year.
I will second that. May we vote? We have a motion in a second.
Any additional discussion?
Yes. Any more discussion? Ms. Dorie?
Could we just put a date to that? So this is good through May or June, and then come July one, we'll start the process. Could we make sure that we have that understanding that we will, as of July one, will put out the applications and start advertising for it, so they're ready to go in September? Would that be what you would do?
Do, to implement it.
Do, to implement it?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So for, for clarification, Ms. Dorie, December twelfth, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020.
Right, these, these are...
Which will be the end of our fiscal year, technical school year. And then the process will begin with the new policy that was put into place last month effective July one. Is, is that what you're asking?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be on the record.
I do too.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Can we vote? Motion in a second. Ready to vote?
Motion carried?
Next on the agenda, we have ordinances for second reading. We have a number of these, Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-four through Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-seven. These have all been over many times, and this is an action item.
Madam Chair, Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-seven, Section D, can there be clarification as to its, whether it's four days or fourteen business days prior to scheduling a meeting? Because in, in the way it's written now, it says four, but in parentheses, it says fourteen.
Fourteen.
It's fourteen.
Fourteen.
Should have been fourteen.
Yes. Clarification.
That is correct. We have the word four, but the number fourteen in parentheses, which probably caused some of the confusion, so that was, that's a typo.
Yeah.
Should be fourteen across the board.
Any other questions? Ms. Dorie?
Are we taking each of these separately?
No. It's up to the motion. We've been over these many times. Mr. Riddick?
I, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinances nineteen twenty dash thirty-four through nineteen twenty dash forty-six, with the exception of nineteen twenty dash forty-seven.
Is there a second? Ms. Jenkins?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Any other discussion?
Motion carried.
Okay, the only one we have then is Ordinance nineteen...
Okay, the only one we have then is Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-seven. And this was for second reading. Is any discussion on that? Mr. Mitnick?
I'm concerned about the fourteen business days. For a board member to have an item on the agenda. For instance, for the January two thousand twenty board meeting, if I wanted to have an item on the agenda, I would have had to submit it on December sixth, which is last week, in order to have fourteen business days. And I know that may just come up once or twice a year, but it still would be the rule. And I'm not sure that that's fair. I would rather see it be fourteen days.
In other words, you're saying remove the business days from it?
Remove the business days and just add calendar days if you want to. And, you know, and I, we're still be affected by that with the time between this meeting and next month's meeting. But, uh, at least it wouldn't be retroactive to last Friday.
I think originally when that was discussed in the Policy Committee, Dr. Buck might want to speak on that, on Ms. Storey.
When we discussed it in the Policy Committee, thank you. We talked about the fact that the board had requested seven days' notice with the agenda. They wanted seven days' notice for the packet of materials. The additional seven days was necessary for the board to respond to, or the staff to respond to, the requests that the board made for materials. When we give them no time to respond to what we have, then what we do is break down an entire process. Everybody has to drop what they're doing to run around to get whatever reports we want. And we thought it fair that if it has to be done, because this is a compilation of, of everybody's work that, that we have when we get the agenda, it's a compilation of everybody's work. If we give them no time to get it, but we demand that we have time to read it and review it, then it stops the work process. And so we thought it only fair that if we needed seven business days to read it, surely we would give people seven business days to get it together. And remember, our big issue was that, uh, the materials weren't posted in time. They weren't available to the public in time. We didn't have time to review it and the staff has to have time to get it. That was our thinking with regard to that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, I thought that this matter, um, that Dr. Brooks, Dr. Buck is speaking to, was addressed by norms and protocol. When a board member is requesting information of the superintendent, which is the proper channel and which we supposed to go through, that the superintendent will, at that point, will have leeway to work alongside and work with that board member to ensure that it's not too time consuming to take them away from their day-to-day business and operating stuff at public schools. Furthermore, that if an item couldn't be done in time far as, couldn't make it far as the agenda, that it will have the prerogative to go to the following, um, month agenda. So I'm just trying to figure out how do we reach the fourteen, um, business day thing? Because the issues that I was having as a board member with information, it wasn't that the request prolonged. It, it was just that between the information making it to us or to myself wasn't done in a timely manner. So policy that what we have in place as is, it works. We just had a hiccup from my understanding. I mean, I have all the details.
Any other discussion? Ms. Storey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not under the assumption that it was business days. If you, when you first talked just recently, just right now, you referred to it as seven days and fourteen days. And I thought that was what it was. Um, I'm not in agreement with business days. I think that's too much in advance. And so for me, seven days, actually, I think my input on the Policy Committee was seven days and seven days. So I think this is another example where we just didn't agree in the Policy Committee. So I, I do think that business days is too long. That's, um, that's almost three weeks ahead of time and a lot of things happen, um, in that timeframe. So I feel business days is, um, just too long.
Any other? Anyone else? Dr. Buck?
The only thing that I would say is if we ask for the seven days in advance, our staff doesn't work on Saturday and Sunday. They're off too. So I mean, I, sometimes we just, I just, I wonder if we consider other people's time as well. When we ask for something and we want it on a Friday and then we start counting. Or I remember one particular incident, we were out for bad weather or something and, and there was a complaint that the materials didn't get to people. The staff was off as well. The people who had to gather these materials together were off as well. And if we want it seven days in advance, I would suggest we give them time to get it. And it wasn't just, uh, Mr. Riddick, I think that you were talking about, uh, materials that you were talking about. But we, we got a report, we got a couple of reports, uh, for bus times for three, three months, four months. We had bus times. It took time to calculate all of that, to collect it, to calculate it, to have it ready to be in the packet that we needed. And it was something over and above the daily tasks that people have to do. And that was just one example. That's not throw, throw shade at anybody. That was just one example, but it took time to get that together, which means that people are not doing their regular duties during their workday. So, you know, I don't know whether it's, it's five business, ten business days or fourteen days. We had given two weeks as a cutoff anyway. I believe, uh, Mrs. Byram, two weeks was the time that you needed if you wanted to get something on the agenda. So that's where fourteen days came from, two weeks. But the staff is off on weekends as well, so.
Madam Chair, um, first I would like to share some clarity. Uh, when it comes to the data that was requested from transportation, the software that we use, it automatically compiles that information. And that is a part of the normal scope of the transportation coordinator, um, to have that information readily available. Uh, secondly, I would like to, um, change the days from fourteen business days. And my recommendation would be, uh, ten business days. Why? If your office received a Freedom of Information Act request, according to the law, you have five days to respond, not fourteen. So that way it's not a scratch. It's ten days, ten business days. We ask, you have five days. So technically on the sixth day, from our request going in or is processing, we get that information back. That gives us about three or four days to respond and go from there. So what we had in place at first, it worked. It's just that sometime us as board members have to remember, we have to follow the policy. I can't preach it enough. Documentation beats conversation. We have to follow the policy. And per our norms and protocols, when a request is asked that will take more than an hour, the superintendent has that discretion to fulfill that, that information in a timely manner and communicate that with the board member. So if the superintendent felt that it was warranted, that it could be done, that's his, uh, judgment. But I strongly recommend that we do, uh, ten business days, uh, prior to the meeting. Go back to what we had at first.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, so I'm hearing two, uh, potential recommendations from board members. Both Ms. Mitnick and Ms. Storey both said, uh, to remove the business portion of it for fourteen days. Mr. Riddick has now given us a second option of ten, uh, business days instead of fourteen calendar days. So that is pretty close, um, for a timeframe between fourteen calendar days and ten business days, just for the board to be able to, to, continue to deliberate that as we hopefully make a decision.
Dr. Buck?
This is a policy. That's what we're talking about, a policy. So we're talking about following through with what is in writing. I just wanted to make that clear. This is the policy that we're trying to vote on. And with regard to FOIA, with regard to FOIA request, a FOIA request can be for something that already exists. I learned that from our attorney. If you ask for a report that does not always already exist as you can as a board member, then the staff needs to be allowed the time to get that information together without disturbing the daily functions, the daily tasks that they have to do. That has not been the case. And so this is not just for our protection as a board for getting information that we need, but for theirs as well, to give them time to get it. And even though something might exist, somebody has to go back and compile it. Somebody has to write the report. Somebody has to send it through. And the difference in the FOIA request and the request for information that we might request, not under FOIA, but just because we want it, they have to compile it and that indeed does take time. Now, we had talked about two weeks, which would be fourteen days, which would be two ten-day periods, if that's what you're talking about. And I have no problem if we want to amend the policy to say fourteen days, which include ten business days. But if we want our materials seven days in advance, which is what we've decided is our policy, then we have to give people who compile these reports time to get them together. And that was my point.
And, you know, a point to, to remember here, I think Dr. Gordon mentioned in the budget here, and, and we all know this. We're understaffed. When we go to these people and ask for these reports and so forth, and we limit, you know, and say we want them back in so many days or whatever, many times, like Dr. Harrison, she had to drop what she was doing and go to that particular item to work on it for hours and hours and hours with her staff. So we have to consider our people, you know, when we're making these demands. And, um, that's something to consider, you know? And Dr. Gordon has already told us, we are functioning at a level of a school system that has maybe eight.
Eighty-five hundred.
Eight, eighty-five hundred students. So we are putting demands on our personnel and we, as board members, need to realize those things. I hope you will take that into consideration as you think. And Ms. Storey?
I make a motion that we accept this policy as written minus the word business in letter, in Section D, and minus the word business, uh, in the first paragraph after seven, and minus the word business in the second paragraph after fourteen.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
Uh, next, under, uh, new business, we have a Finance Committee meeting. I believe it was to be scheduled for January seventh at three-thirty at the School Board Office. This is an action item. Discussion? Yes, Ms. Storey?
Um, this is a announcement of a committee meeting. Does this need to be an action item? Usually it's, just needs to be posted, correct?
Right.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? That's an action item, right?
Ms. Forsman, as a point of clarification, we originally had it listed as an action item because the date hadn't been determined as we were trying to prepare for the budget process and preparation for the next School Board meeting. Is that, that's correct. Uh, so Mr. Waller, just for clarity, because Ms. Storey brings up a good point, uh, due to the fact that we did not have a specific date listed, would that have to be a date that the board would have to vote on? Or would that just be an informational item?
I guess my question is, the Finance Committee that's referenced here, is this the Finance Committee of the School Board? Or is this some other committee? If it's the Finance Committee of the School Board, it does not require board action. It only requires the committee giving public notice that it's having a meeting, much like we do with the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Waller.
So no action is needed then? Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, uh, next is informational item, um, Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-eight, uh, first reading, amending Chapter eight, Article twenty-four, Section eight dash twenty-four point one, entitled Authority of the School Board to Approve of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Uh, we have, um, several of these under first reading. Let me find my place here. Uh, Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty, amending Chapter eight, Article thirty-three, Section eight dash thirty-three point four, entitled SOL Retake Grades Kindergarten Through Eight Expedited Retakes, Grade Three Through Eight Expedited Retakes for the End of the Course Test, first reading. Yep. Then we have Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-one, amending Chapter nine, Article twenty, Section nine dash twenty, entitled Bloodborne Contagious or Infectious Diseases: Identification of Students or Employees Kept Confidential. Alternative Education Training Required Superintendent to Develop Guidelines, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-two, amending Chapter nine, Article twenty-one, Section nine dash twenty-one, entitled Students Fundraising. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-three, amending Chapter ten, Article three, Section ten dash three point three, entitled Request Procedures Responding to Requests, Time for Processing Requests of the Policies, first reading. Uh, Ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty fifty-four, adding a new section, Chapter ten, Article section, Article seven, Section ten dash seven point five one, entitled Instrumental Materials Participating in Surveys and Evaluations, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-five, adding a new section, Chapter ten, Article section, Article seven, Section ten, seven, five point two, entitled Physical Examinations for Screenings and Parent Involvement Required, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-six, amending Chapter ten, Article ten, Section ten slash ten point one, entitled Registration Requirement: Grounds for Trespass of the Policies of the Suffolk School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-seven, amending Chapter ten, Article eleven, Section ten dash eleven point one, entitled Use of School Buildings During Non-School Hours, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-eight, amending Chapter ten, Article thirteen, Section ten dash thirteen point one, entitled Acceptance of Gifts, first reading. Um, Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-nine, amendment, amending Chapter ten, Article eighteen, Section ten dash eighteen point two, entitled Public Safety and Parent and Student Rights: Interviews by Resource Offices. Interviews by Resource Offices, Interviews of Students by Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Interviews About Non-School Matters, Development of Programs Reporting to Law Enforcement: Official Policies of the School Board." First reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash sixty, amending chapter ten, article eighteen, section ten dash eighteen point three, entitled "Statement of Purpose: Charter School Defined Subject to Federal and State Law and Other Requirements: Open Enrollment, Charter School Applications." First reading. And ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash sixty-one, amending chapter eight, article two, section eight dash eleven point one, entitled "Family Life Education in General." First reading. They're all for first reading this evening. And they were all first reading items. And then we have one, going back to item two on unfinished business, ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-four, amendment seven, article six, section seven dash six point one, entitled "Tobacco Products and Nicotine Vapor Products Prohibited: Tobacco Products Prohibited on School: Superintendent to Develop Regulations." And this is second reading. This is for first reading and adoption. And this would be an action item.
Madam Chair, I believe the one that's actually first reading and adoption is under the new business and is listed as number three of the ordinances. And it's ordinance number nineteen twenty dash forty-nine.
So we're on ordinance nineteen slash twenty dot, uh, dash forty-nine?
Correct. That should be for first reading and adoption.
Oh, first reading and adoption. Excuse me. Uh, that's different. Okay. And that would include SOL tests, standard units of credit, one-hundred-and-forty clock hours required, verified units of credit, three-mumbled review panel created, limited proficiency in English exemption, students with disabilities exception, and awarding diplomas. First reading and adoption, correct? Oh, okay. Thank you for that correction. So that one would be an action item. Any questions or discussion?
Motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept this ordinance as written. We understand that there are some time constraints, and that's why we want to get this done on the first reading.
I second the motion.
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
Okay. And next, we're on public speakers. Do we have any public speakers?
Madam Chair, we have another action item.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Item number sixteen, resolution nineteen slash twenty dash fifteen, resolution approving the agreement between the Suffolk School Board and the Oil Equipment Sales and Service Company. Action item.
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion, anyone?
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
Now we move to any public speakers. We have anyone that's listed? No, Ms. Gardner? No one listed? Okay. And business by board members? We'll start with Ms. Jenkins.
I just thank the staff and everyone for all your hard work. Um, we're not here to micromanage anybody. We're here to be assistant to you. Um, you all are doing an exceptional job with everything you do. And we, on behalf of myself, I know I appreciate you, and I'm sure everybody else on the board appreciates everything that you do. And, um, Dr. Gordon, still, we appreciate everything that you're doing thus far, and we're still looking forward to even greater things, um, from Dr. Gordon. Um, I just want to highlight that I attended a few programs at the elementary schools, the award ceremonies for perfect attendance and honor roll, and they were very exciting. Particularly, I went to Nazman Parkway. I went to, um, Mac Ben. And the kids are just excited when they are recognized for doing something good, not just always being chastised if they do a little something mischievous. But I appreciate all the work that the principals and the staff are doing to make sure that we are encouraging our little ones, because that's exactly what they need, encouragement to move on to the next level. Last Friday, we had the opportunity for Legislative Day, and we went to Colonel Fred Cherry, and we had a wonderful time there. The, the school is just phenomenal with the technology that they have. And, um, you know, it saddened us to look at just how great that school is. And some of our schools are really not, you know, high-tech or even match anything at those schools. And so, you know, we're, we're looking forward to doing things for schools such as John F. Kennedy and, um, you know, with the new schools hopefully we will be building soon, because we can't put all those new things in that old shell. We need to, you know, do what we have to do to make sure that our students, now and the students in the future, have a school that is equal or even better than what we have now with the new schools that we're built. So I am on board for that. I am gonna just keep pounding until we're not gonna put those schools in the back burner. We're gonna put them forefront, because this is what our kids need. We can't expect great, great things like we want from our students, and we're just not giving them the equipment to do that. And, Dr. Gordon, I just want to, um, thank you again for the program, the initiative that you just put forth for the Chromebooks. That's exciting. I watch my girls with those stacks of books in their book bags. And, yeah, it's, it's a back killer. So thank you so much for bringing that, um, to our school. I also want to say I'll visit Kingsford High School. They had their elementary Christmas concert, and that was great. It was, the, the house was packed. The kids were excited. They had so many kids, they were singing down the owls, and it was great participation. And that's what we like. When our kids are doing something, we encourage our parents, as well as the staff, to come and support them. And that's exactly what I saw this week. And, um, lastly, um, I also want to say that it does, it saddens my heart to know that one of my mentors, Ms., um, and my family member, Ms. Skeeter, um, passed away. But we know that she's resting in a better place. And she only wanted the best for Suffolk Public Schools. She gave her best to Suffolk Public Schools, and that's what we're gonna continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reddick?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first I'd like to do is, I'd like to thank Mr. Sadler and the Coral students from Northern Shores Elementary for their presentation of the holiday music this evening. I think they did an exceptional job, and they certainly put us in the holiday spirit. And I thank them for the, for, uh, the gift that they gave us this evening. And please check the calendar, because there's lots of performances that are coming up next week. Uh, it's posted on the school system website. And, um, both elementary, high school, middle school students will be performing. And if you need an opportunity to get into the holiday spirit just by attending one of these programs, I think you'll be able to do that. And I, I'd like to wish, uh, happy holidays to our, um, everyone in the Suffolk Public School family and to all of you out there in our constituents as well. Thank you.
Ms. Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to also say that we enjoyed the Virginia School Board Association annual convention in Williamsburg. And that was a, um, a very good experience for all of the board members who attended. Learned much about educational matters and what we can do to make our jobs better as board members, our responsibilities, and it was very enlightening and very enjoyable. Also, the Legislative Day, as Mrs. Jenkins, uh, mentioned, was a success over at Colonel Fred Cherry. Enjoyed the civics classes and enjoyed seeing our young people involved in government and taking an interest in being good citizens. And so this is what that's all about. If we can encourage our young people to be good citizens and learn all about, uh, government, that's, uh, a plus. Uh, I'd like to thank all of the staff, Dr. Gordon, and the, uh, school administrative staff, all you are doing for our children, our administrators at school, and all of our teachers and employees of Suffolk Public Schools. I would like to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas, and may you have, uh, uh, much, much, uh, time to enjoy your family and, and in the upcoming New Year, uh, best wishes for that. Thank you.
Ms. Riddick?
Well, I got a great wealth of stuff I want to talk about, whole clip for it for. All right. Um, first thing I would like to start with, on November twenty-second, I had the privilege to go with Kingsford High School and their football program over to, uh, Churchland High School. And it was a very eventful occasion. Uh, Bulldogs did an excellent job despite the obstacles that they were faced with. Me and another board member from the city of Portsmouth, we, we met out there. We were very competitive. You all will see stuff coming up in the near future between him and Ian and I. Next, on December the seventh, I had the privilege to go to the Suffolk, Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance Gala. And it was a remarkable event. I got to network with a lot of our stakeholders here in Suffolk, here in the city of Suffolk, to encourage them to utilize their churches as homework help centers. So they would be responsible for creating a tutoring program that serviced their community, uh, within areas of helping our children with homework help. Also, on December seventh, that early morning, Dr. Buck and I, that was a highlight of our year. Well, for my year, I can't speak for Dr. Buck, but it was a great occasion. Our JFK Middle School Choir had the privilege to sing in front of twenty thousand people at the shipyard on national TV. Didn't come up short one note. And they was not even afraid of what they was doing. You had John, former President John F. Kennedy, his daughter, and Senator John Kerry, and a lot of other dignitaries there. And our youth, they blew the roof off the joint, for the lack of better terms. We're nearing the end, so I can use a little slang and other expressions. Then, just as you got to witness our students perform, to hear the remarks that Dr. Buck and I heard as we were leaving, people talking about how well they done, and to see it firsthand, it was remarkable. We have something to brag about. We have something to brag about. A lot of divisions don't have that opportunity. And one thing that this board, I believe we all share this sentiment, is that we're gonna do a better job of telling our story. Getting our own news out there. We're not talking about fake news. This is real news. This is what's going on in Suffolk Public Schools, and this is Keeping it Real Edition with your host, Tyron Riddick. Lastly, on, um, December the eleventh, Kingsford High School had a outstanding Christmas program last night. And if you wasn't able to watch it, they went live. And I mean, it was remarkable from start to finish. We truly have jewels in the city of Suffolk, and I just want to take my hats off. So in closing, Dr. Gordon, you and your staff, I thank you all for the wonderful work that you all have done. I'm hearing all great things about you, um, disregard the negative one percent. But we are hearing great things, because guess what? We're doing what it takes to get the job done. Thank you.
Ms. Story?
Thank you. Well, a lot of good things have been shared. I was at the Legislative Day as well, which was just great, and that was wonderful. I was also recently at, um, doing, at the Armory for where wreaths were being put together. And I was glad to see Nazman River High School is over there with some of their clubs and doing, um, that as a service project. That was great. I love the Chromebook initiative. Thank you so much. Long overdue. I'm so happy with that. So thank you for bringing that. And then I just, I know that there's someone on this board that just absolutely loves Nazman River to the max. And she always gets to brag. So I just have to bring up a basketball game that I attended recently. And, uh, it was, it was, it was women and men. And I, I don't know if I should say the score, but I just wanted to talk about the Bulldogs. And it was just an amazing game. And, uh, Bulldogs just were right there, and I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm just so sorry. I'm so, so sorry. But it's one time. The Bulldogs are just gonna brag to the max, because, um, I, I, I hear a lot of bragging over there about Nazman River. But, uh, that night, maybe, yeah, there wasn't much. Well, what can we say? It was sort of a slaughter. Okay, so, um, did I say it was a great game? It was just awesome to see those Bulldog men and women. Took it to 'em, man. So, um, Merry Christmas, everyone. Have a very, very good, restful New Year. Thank you to all our employees, um, for all that you do. Have a good, restful time. Come back excited about the New Year. And, uh, we, we really do appreciate, um, all that you put forth. So I'm very excited. I thought we had a great, um, start with the budget for next year. It's excellent. One more thing. Thank you so much for meeting with each of us. I appreciate that, and I look forward to more meetings with you. It's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Dr. Buck?
Okay. We, uh, we're very busy this month. I want to congratulate, first of all, before I forget, or, or let me say this very first thing. Mrs. Skeeter welcomed me to the board. She was my mentor, and she was my friend, and I really do miss her. We sat down there near each other for quite a few years, and it was just a blessing to know her. So I want to get that out of the way. And of course, my prayers, her husband and her children and grandchildren are still in my prayers. I want to say congratulations to those of you who completed the LAP Academy. I know it's a very strenuous thing that you went through, but you did it, and you were successful. So just know that, uh, we're proud of you and look forward to you working in our system and being a source for us. I want to give a special shout-out. I had the opportunity to go and see an arts program, a STEAM program over at Florence Bowser Elementary. And the children were so cute. They were wonderful. The program was wonderful. It's a state, uh, grant program, and I'm just glad we had the opportunity. I know it's in several of our schools, but I got to see a performance over there. And I want to say to Chandra Daran, Doron, she did an excellent job. I had a wonderful time in her class. And I know she was in the academy, because I saw her tonight. She did an outstanding, outstanding job with her children. We were just very impressed. And of course, the science liaison, who was there with her with this project. Thank you so much. And I want to say, uh, give a special shout-out to people at Nazman River. We do other things other than sports. For the CSEP program. During our time in Williamsburg, the CSEP program had a brunch. I just want to share with you, the food was delicious. It's probably something we could actually pu- actually put on the market if we tried to do something that way. The teachers in that program did a wonderful job and the food was really good, I ate till I was stuffed and then I went back to Williamsburg where we learned a lot, okay? I wanted to say also, the legislative days were fantastic, we got a chance to talk to our local legislators and we're just pleased with the information we were able to share with them and we believe it's gonna be an ongoing conversation. And last and a very, the very special event, I want to just tag on to what Mr. Riddick said, our children from John F. Kennedy sung beautifully, but they behaved well as well. We sat in freezing cold for four hours and not one of them was out of place in any way or being in any way inappropriate and it was hard, I'm not sure I was appropriate all the time, at least under my breath. They performed well and, and they wore us well, they really did, I was so proud of them. I've also asked the superintendent if they can come and sing for us next month. I think we need to recognize our children and as Mr. Riddick was saying and I think everybody else here, we want to tell our own story.
That's right.
And that's a wonderful way to tell our own story, they did a great job. Their parents were there with them, for anybody who's laboring under the impression that they weren't, their parents were there with them, their principal was there with them, their assistant principal there with them, as well as their, their principal's son who goes to another school, he was there cheering him on too, but we had a wonderful time and it was just a great opportunity. I want to thank you for a great year, our staff from last year, this year, you've done a wonderful job and I look forward to much more. Thank you for our leaders because they make a difference. Thank you.
Eighty-six seventeen.
Yes.
Numbers, numbers, numbers.
She called that a school.
Numbers, numbers, numbers.
Let's put that behind us.
Yes.
Well, ditto to everything everyone said, there's so much going on at this time of the year, but I have to commend our new clerk, I want to bring up Ms. Gardner over here, she's doing a fantastic job. We attend many, many, I see some clapping in the audience for, we attend many events and when we were in Williamsburg, our superintendent was there and of course, our clerk was there for training and so forth, but I will say, she was Johnny on the spot. Before I could even get my feet off the bed in the morning, she was texting me, telling me where I needed to be and what was coming up on the agenda.
That's right.
And she was there way ahead of all of us doing that job, so I want to commend her and I know it's big shoes to fill, but she's filling them quite well. Congratulations, Ms. Gardner. And we don't know all the ins and outs, as she told me, I'm trying to learn the ins and outs, but we are learning, you know, we're in a learning process, everybody up here, we're learning. I got this new mechanism up here, I'm trying to learn that and Dr. Gordon and I are trying to work it together. But anyway, we're gonna do it as a team, right, Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
We're gonna learn as a team. So I commend them for attending that, that was a wonderful event. We spent a lot of time together, five of us, the board members that attended and the superintendent and clerk, we did a lot of team building and I think we got to know each other very well, it was excellent. Friday, we did attend Meet Your Legislature event at Colonel Cherry and I want to commend Dr. Gordon and his staff, again, those that attended, all of the people who took time out of their busy day to be there to answer questions and so forth and help compile the information for those that attended. I want to commend Dr. Green, who was our host, principal at Colonel Cherry, he did an outstanding job, touring those classrooms was very informative, I am a former history and government teacher, so I really enjoyed the civics lessons that they were learning and the input from the students and their questions were right on point. We have some budding politicians among those kids, I think, so, you know, it makes us very proud. Also, I want to thank Delegate Emily Bruhl for taking time out of her busy schedule to come with us, she was very impressed by what she saw. She said, you know, I'm a former Nazman River High School graduate, Ms. Baum, you know me. I said, yes, what could you have done if you had had these opportunities? And she said, yes, and I see where we need to go, I see where we need to go and I know Suffolk is going there. So that was very appreciated. Also, I want to thank Delegate Clint, elect Clint Jenkins for attending, Mr. Jenkins was there with us and he was listening and working with the students, he was very informative about his position that he is in a learning mode, right, Ms. Jenkins? And learning every day. And Councilman Lou Ward attended and we were glad to have him on board, we had a good delegation, we hope to do more in the springtime, we're already planning something, Dr. Gordon is, and staff for the springtime, but that was a wonderful event. And the Northern Shores Musical Group tonight, that just shows me, you know, really what our kids can do, like everyone said, I'm most proud of them and I know somewhere down the line, we're working on something for music and the fine arts and I want to see it come to fruition in our city because we need this. I know there are students out there that will aspire to do great things and we've got to help them to do that. And I wish all of our employees, our staff, a much-needed vacation and a little rest, I hope some of you will take some time for family and friends and enjoy the holiday and I hope you will have a safe and wonderful holiday as well. And we all on the board wish you the best. Yep. And we forgot two items, but we're going back now, we didn't have our personnel report and the pupil personnel report, so Dr. Buck?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel report.
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
And the pupil personnel report?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the pupil personnel report.
Board members, please vote. Motion carried.
Okay, and I believe we have informational items, are there any things on that that we have not completed?